The sausage is a great amount. That's.
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
We'll call this special meeting to order, and I think we will dispense with the pledge. We did that earlier, and so could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kramer.
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Here.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Alguier.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
I'm present.
Thank you. At this time, we have an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is about the equalization, annual statutory equalization hearing, and Parks and Recreation Commission. And so if you have any public comments for those two agenda items, you could speak now. Yes, Mr. Makowski.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're trying to see whether this is the appropriate place to commit a comment about the assessing process of this current year, what we all got to use assessment notices. I suspect if you look at it, you've seen an explosion in assessment values.
Yes, yes, that's.
Sure.
I understand the reason for it, and I'm sure there must be reasons for it. Having any articulation on what might be either something has happened that we need necessity for lots more revenue for some reason, or whether some people at the state level have been a little bit illiterate in staying on top of this issue, or whether this issue has been a local issue, we haven't been paying attention locally, but it seems like the assessed values have exploded. And so that's going to produce getting all new sales that produce a bonanza of revenue for the government. And I think that probably was the motivation at the state level by the Treasury Department to get some more revenue. I'm not sure. But these will have consequences, and they increase and inflate property dramatically if those businesses are 30 to 50% in some areas. So we'd like to set a standard here that we are opposed to that process. Whether the process is, we're not sure whether we had enough due diligence at the local level, your level here, or the council level, in terms of this matter as to why things were happening. But everybody goes to the default statement. You have access to go up any more than 5%.
5%.
That's a fallacy. And we should, we should refrain from promoting these fallacies to the general public, because it's untrue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
And any commissioner comment? Okay, we'll turn to our first agenda item. Andrew's here. Thanks for, thanks for being here, Andrew.
Thank you.
Andrew, can you just pause just for a moment because to allow this to be livestreamed, just in case there's people calling in, I'm sure this is what they're going to want to hear, so. So in that pause, there's a different map now. It was changed last year.
The boundaries changed.
Boundaries.
Now, for what?
The township. Casin or what?
No, those are township boundaries. These aren't district.
They're township.
Oh, this is voting districts. Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is just township.
You're right, that's, that's township. Okay, good. I stand corrected. Good. Because the voting districts changed.
Thank you. We're all set now.
Are they on? Are we live?
Yeah, that's his Bailey Wick.
Hey, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
We are live.
Well, I promised Ty that I would, I would get you out of here by 5:30, so.
Wrong answer.
I'll try to be brief.
Thank you.
Don't rush, this is my favorite. This is, I love this report.
Well, so you all should have a copy of the report, and then I also sent a PDF, and I'll refer to tabs and follow along with whatever media of choice you like. The last time I was reporting in February, we discussed a study that the Equalization Department conducts annually to support county equalization.
Yeah.
The purpose of those studies is to determine the level of assessment in each class of property in each township. And I know I sound like a both-in-record when I say this, but again, property in Michigan is statutorily required to be assessed at 50% of its true cash value, and hence the purpose of equalization at the county level is to ensure the level of assessment between property classes in each jurisdiction is uniform. So the equalization process sets the property tax base for the county and helps to ensure the property taxes are all being fair and equitable in manner. And the Board of Commissioners delegates that responsibility, the responsibility for the equalization process to the equalization department, but ultimately it's the responsibility of the board itself to equalize. So that's why we're meeting today in this special session, MCL 2095-1, States of Equalization Session, will be on Tuesday following the second Monday in April following solar eclipse. That is why we're here. So the report that is in front of you provides a summary of the county's 2024 county equalized value and taxable value. And as sort of per my usual approach, I'm not going to go through the report page by page, but I do want to spend just a few moments looking at what I believe the most significant component of the report. Just feel free to jump in if you have questions, if you just turned up anything. I had a lot of coffee today, so. So if you turn to tab two or page six, if you're with me, you're, you're chowed with. So tab two is a letter that states that all county equalized values are subject to review and change by Michigan State Tax Commission until the fourth Monday in May, when the final order of state equalization is issued. The official report, which is included in here, it's, it's the L4024, it's on tab 14, that's filed with the SDC by May 6, the first Monday in May. State equalization will take place on May 28 of 2024. So the calendar, the schedule, it looks like at the township level, we have March order review in March, county equalization follows in April, and then state equalization follows in May. So that's, that's sort of the schedule. But broadly, I want to just thank my staff, and then all of the, all of the assessing officers in the county. It's a back-and-forth process of equalization, and we always need the help of the assessors to make it happen. If you turn to tab four, which I think is page eight in your digital, this is just the certification of the recommended county equalized, equalized valuation by the state director. And on the certification, it just states that we don't have counties of lower county, and then highest director certified as above before, and indicates my recommendations for county equalized values for various classes. So certification indicates the county equalized value of each class of real property, the total county equalized value of personal property, and the overall county equalized for the real and personal property.
What is timber cut over?
So, yeah. What is that? Timber, timber cut over, timber cut over is a classification which we have never previously had in the county. In essence, it's where you essentially cut the timber for a crop, and then the land is, doesn't have anything on it yet, right? It's not, it's not, it's not going to put into commercial or residential. So that, that classification has come about, I think personally as part of it, as, as an error, and I'm trying not to work with the assessor to get those properties classified where they should be. But for 2024, for this year's role, that is where they're classified. And there's, it's too, it's too specific.
Not very large.
No. I think it's less than, I think it's less than 30 acres.
So to qualify for agricultural, you have to have at least 50% or 51% in cultivation, right? In the total.
So to qualify for.
For the farm exemption, agricultural exemption.
So to be classified as agricultural?
Yes.
You have to be conducting agriculture, some kind of agricultural operation.
What exemption?
But there's a, there's a percentage, it's got to be what, 51%, I believe.
So the percentage, the 51% is related to qualified agricultural? So for, so for example, and this is, I know, I've gone back, there was a taxpayer that I've gone, have many discussions with on this topic. The agricultural, to be classified as agricultural, there's no size requirement. So for, the example that I always use is you could have a penny per parcel, and you're using one acre of that parcel to grow, say, something very, very high value, like say saffron. Saffron is a very expensive crop. So the value of that one acre would be enough that that parcel.
For the one acre.
Could fall into the agricultural class, even though nine, 10 million other acres are just woods.
Okay.
So the agricultural class is not, there's no, there's no size requirement. Now, if you own a piece of residential property, you can get what's known as a qualified agricultural exemption.
Forest, yeah, right.
And in that case, if you have a 10-acre parcel and you're farming on six acres, you can get a qualified agricultural.
So what if you're farming one acre of something that doesn't have high value?
So the way the classification works is first you look, the assessor will look at the property to determine what are the use, what's the use that's going on, and what are the usings that are going on? If there's multiple usings, then the assessor then looks at the value of each of the usings, and the value of the highest used drives classification.
So does that value have to be 50% of a total?
So in the case of agricultural, in order for something to be as a predominant value of whatever, whatever agricultural operation is, that has to be greater than whatever the other operations are.
Timber, timber cut over and tree farms do not count.
Timber cut over is its own spectrum.
Yeah, okay.
But woods can be part of a farm.
Correct, yeah, so correct.
There's a value.
So you can have, an adjacent woodlot can also be, so if you have a 40-acre corn, and then you've got a continuous adjacent woodlot, that woodlot can also be an agricultural.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Andrew.
So on tab six, again, page 10, tab your digital edition, it's a summary report that shows the percent change in both the county equalized values and taxable from 2023 to 2024 by what the ultimate. Overall parcel count has increased by 0.6% to the net gain of 157 parcels. But county equalized value from '23 to '24 has increased 23.57%.
Oh.
Correct.
Sorry.
So that was an increase of 5.5 billion to 6.8, so 5.5 billion last year to 6.8 billion this year.
And that's just real estate values?
So that is, that is the assessment on all, so residential, commercial, agricultural property.
Does that address Mr. Makowski's concern?
Correct. So this increase, this increase is seen in, on everyone's assessment notices that they're receiving. And not everyone is necessarily seeing a 23.57% increase, this is for the entire county.
So it's not a state action, it's the value of the market, it's a market.
Correct. So this is driven by.
Yeah.
But the state's going to make Andrew meet that state value. So Andrew just can't say, you guys only really get hit hard, I'm just going to only raise you guys up a few percentage, and the state's not going to allow that. Well, the assessors could try that, I guess, not Andrew so much, but the assessors can't do that either.
No, the assessors have so many years to bring it up to what the state says.
I think I need the state to put it.
So again, like I said, it started like I said on the road in America, and every time I come to you, statutorily, we assess it, assessments have to be at 50% of each year.
Right.
And that's what the equalization process does, so.
But, so, so like, for example, you got, under Traverse City, you, that change, they put in, it's got to be, there's a whole bunch more apartments, are those on the rules now, down Morgan Hill, Morgan Farms? Are those on, is that what some of that is?
Yeah, I would assume that that, that increase from 68 million to 87 million.
Yeah.
Includes that. It's also, I mean, it's including every, anything that was added, so if anyone put up a rod or anything like that, it's contributing to that business.
But that would also add if something got sold.
Correct.
For too high of, or higher than.
Something sold on cap.
If they sold it in a cap, that, you know, that, that would have been, because there's condos in there, there's a lot of the homes that got built on top of that ridge, you know, that is, that hit the rolls at the end of December, you property, and those, the apartment complexes, you know, not all of them are done, but whatever was done, if it was 70% done, that hit at that time.
Correct.
So they've had a lot of activity in that little corner.
Correct.
This last year. I just know because I just have people by and see it all, everywhere, everywhere.
So that, that increase, that 23.57%, that's in contrast to an increase from '22 to ' '23 of 19.74%. So I look back each year at those yearly increases, and I can look at it from 2013 to '22. And between that timeframe, the average increase per year is 3.53%. So it's pretty clear that we're in an assessing environment that's being driven by a market that's unlike anything that we've previously seen.
True.
And, and I think if you remember back to when I presented in February, I rattle off a whole slew of headlines from Lillona Enterprise, property salesman county, and I think that that kind of demonstrates the point of market design. And of course, whenever I see these numbers that seem very high, that seem like, wow, I always talk to other equalization directors, I spoke with Jim Hager, Grant Travis County is the equalization director, and Charlotte County, she's the equalization director. Grant Travis County saw a 19.47% increase in their county equalized, Charlotte was a 21% increase in their county equalized. So another similar counties, two lots in the sense that they have lots of water, homes on the water, second all of those stuff. So, yeah, Lillona's not alone in experiencing the 30% success across the board. In terms of taxable value, and again, taxable value is what folks actually pay, how is taxable determined, along with mode rate, the county increased 9.33% from '23 to '24, and that was to 3.9 bill. So, and that number, as you know, is held down by the statutory limitations imposed by.
How does that relate to previous years?
How, you mean?
That 9.33% of that?
I'm not sure what.
Would it be, it'd be similar, right? I mean, or it'd be?
It's that number, so that number, that number can rise or fall depending on what does any building run on.
Yeah.
So, but I would have to look back on.
Okay, that's fine, I just.
Okay.
So if you turn to tab 17, that's page 19, if you're following on digital, this graphic just shows the county equalizing each class of real property in '23 and '24, a comparison between the two years. And I think this is an important graph, we'll say, because it highlights the significance of the residential property in the county. So residential class makes up 91.82% of the total SAS value in the county. So it's primarily the market for residential property driving these increases in county equalized. And I think I've mentioned before, like I talked about this in earlier other meetings, we think of Lillona County as being this land of farms and vineyards. That's what is in Lillona County, just going by the numbers, it's housing, even living on lakes, even living in your town. If you turn to tab eight, or page 20, digital, this shows the county equalized values since 2003. So you can see that values climbed until 2008, which was the high point at the beginning of the recession, and then from there, it took until 2020 to surpass that 2008 value. And Lillona had an SBT to increase each year. So John, '23 to '24.
Billion, billion three.
28.57%. That 23.57% represents a percentage of over $1.2 billion.
Six billion.
That's a present increase in value in 2020. You might expect the previous record was set in '22 to '24, so. If you look to the next page, this is the increase in taxable value across that same timeframe. So John, this is, you know, much more, just looking at the graph, and see it's much more steady year-to-year increase because the increase in taxable value are tied to the rate of inflation, which has historically been quite low for the period of 2003 to '24. And again, as we've discussed previously, the inflation rate multiplied by State Michigan for, for 2024 was 1.05 or 5%. And that's the same as last year because the overall inflation rate is determined by the state. For 2024, it'd be 5.1%, and 5% is the maximum allowable increase per proposal. So that, so for example, last year, the overall inflation rate is 7.9, but the multiplier used by the state was 1, at 1.05 or 5%, because that's the maximum.
Goodness for that.
Thus far, that 5% tax, or excuse me, 5% cap, that proposal has only been hit twice so far, so it's hit in '23, and then again. So if you turn now to tab 14, which is.
31, I think.
Yeah, 37.
So the L4037, these are the L4037s for the, for the units in the county or the townships. In this form, it identifies the assessed value as equalized for each class of real property, as well as the value of personal property in each township. So the 4037s are signed by the chairperson of the, and the board, and it's provided the assessors with all these documents. And it's on, it's on the L4037s that we can actually see county equalization at work. So if you go to, if you put board, it's at page 44, if you can. You should, you should be looking at Lillona Townships, 4037.
Yep.
So you'll see that the Board of Commissioners is being asked to add a sum of 2,790,573 to the real commercial class in this township. So the reason for this is that while the real commercial class had an assessment ratio of 49.94 prior to the March order review, the Board of Commissioners reduced the assessment of a single commercial property by $2.5 million. So that reduction meant that the assessment ratio of the real commercial was no more between 49 and 50. And that means that the Board of Commissioners has to apply a factor.
Right.
To shift back that class in that unit to 50%. So this is what equalization is. So adding that 2,790,573, that class brings the ratio of that class from 46.89 to 50. So again, that, that is, that is what equalization is. And this is the first time since 2019 the Board of Commissioners has been asked to apply a factor to a unit in Lillona County, and the first time that I've gotten to do it as an equalization director, which is.
Wow.
Very interesting, because I had a lot to learn, and I had to call word Spencer.
What, what was, what was the factor rate that's going to come down on, it's just on commercial or residential?
So it's on, it was on commercial.
Okay.
And the factor was 1.066.
Okay, all right.
So that's a percentage was added to the value of every commercial piece then, to reach this?
Yep, across the board.
Okay.
I have, I mean, if you're interested to see the, the, the March 40 documentation on what happens if I have that, I can, I can tell you.
Lemonade.
So then the, the final, the final tab that I'll be talking about, is tab 14, which is, page 49, if you're following on digital, this is the L4024, which is the official equalization report that's submitted for the state tax management, signed by itself, sort of, and the chairperson of the board, mailed to the state by May 6, after the office get that, that one. So just to wrap up, March 4 review followed by county equalization in April, and then state equalization in May, that represents the conclusion of the year's assessment cycle. In, in the equalization department, we, you know, we, it's a time of accomplishment for us, but we're also looking forward to getting on the field and actually enjoying the next weather, and then starting this whole process over again. So that is the equalization report, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Before we have questions, you want to get a motion on the table? Commissioner Ogier?
I would move to recommend that the county board, no? So we are making up.
This is a special meeting.
Yeah, okay. I move that the county board approves. Do we recommend, recommends?
It is, it's a resolution. Motion by Alguier that the Lillona County Board of Commissioners approve Lillona County Resolution 2024, dot, 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 a resolution approving the 2024 Lillona County Equalization Report, seconded by.
Support.
I heard you say that.
Take out the word recommend.
Well, the motion, yeah, doesn't need to have recommends.
Support against motion.
Yeah, you heard me.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded, now any discussion before we have a roll call?
Good job.
Commissioner Rexroth?
So, you know, I know this is all done according to, you know, you're not, but I, I can't help but comment how much it breaks my heart to see what is happening in Lillona County. Having lived here all my life, and my family moved here in the 1800s, since 2004, taxable and, and SEV is up 230%. Legacy families in this county can't live here, people that spent their whole life living here, farmers, it, it's just sad. I mean, I, I don't know, there's nothing can be done, but to not recognize it and feel bad about it, I mean, it's just, you know, you know, we got to vote yes, but this is just simply awful. I mean, the people are going to live all their life having this increased amount, you know, yeah, it's okay, it's increasing net worth, but that helps your kids when you die, but it doesn't do anything for you, and it doesn't, and when you die, they can't afford to even buy the thing anyway. So I just got to say, this is, I just, nothing you've done, just a very sad state of affairs.
But Doug, doesn't, I mean, those legacy families, aren't they the ones who are benefiting from it, or no? I mean, if you had a lot of land?
I've lived, I've had the same piece of property since 1987. It's a, it's a ledger entry, but it doesn't put a nickel in my pocket, and it just expands.
But some families, they have more acreage, it's, it's working for them, right? Or they sell.
Only if they sell.
If they sell, yeah.
Well, if they sell.
Which means they're leaving the county.
But they don't want to sell.
And, so then you.
Well, not all of it, but I'm just saying some of it, so.
Oh, wow, God.
Purse or something.
Most of it, most of it, it is no benefit to anyone who lives here.
It does not benefit the.
No, it doesn't benefit a farmer, doesn't benefit anyone who wants to pass that farming land on. There's almost zero benefit to people who want to spend their life here and have smaller life.
Any questions for Andrew or other committees?
And, and worse, and worse then is, is, so now the value on paper, as Commissioner Rexroth said, goes up and up, which makes, of course, the value is going up. And then a miller just passed, and that's a double whammy, because now, not only is there, uh, the struggle of trying to survive here and pay your taxes, now you've got increased taxes because you're, you're, now you're so much more valuable, so you're paying taxes based on that. And, you know, you look at the, look at, look at the difference in.
No.
You know, what'd you say, the residential, you know, compared to. Ag.
At least some people get farm subsidies.
You know, some, some.
Federal subsidies.
But it's very, I don't know, if, if they get a farm subsidy, it's certainly not going to be paying the differences.
Taxes are at 12% in the last year. I didn't sell, I just sell.
We're, we're having, we're having a couple of different discussions. Are you getting those minutes?
I'm just hitting the mark.
It doesn't matter, you can't do anything about it, it's just.
When did you lose control?
Yeah, it must be.
So does anybody have any questions for Andrew?
No. If you think of any later, we're just across the hall.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
So we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Yep. Commissioner Alguier?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer is absent. Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Six zero with one absent.
Thank you, Andrew. We now have an item on the agenda that we've already discussed in our executive committee. So I think we don't have any more business on this item.
Somebody makes a motion?
I move to recommend that the county Board of Commissioners approve the submittal, right?
Whoa, 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 you're not recommending anything.
Okay, then why is this here then?
You move that, just take the recommend, because we're.
I move that the county Board of Commissioners approve the. I move that the county board of commissioners approve the submittal of the MMRMA RAP grant by the Parks and Recreation Commission to provide engineered wood fiber in the playground area at the Miles Curly Park. Support.
Discussion.
I just, as I said earlier, I think that this ought to be, we've got to look at this as one big project and not be just piecemealing these, because if we're going to get support from them, I would rather see it be done on a large project.
Go for it.
Okay, the motion is on the floor, let's vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved by one, thank you. We're now down to public comment.
Phil, please. No, you're... Yes.
No, he's not a hardwood township, and again, I agree, I think the gentleman's name, but we should look at all the information, I'm going to look at this and critique it, I don't think I'm going to find where it's true, and Ty was saying, hey, in the great, we just come from different places, I don't see how we, well, let's, let's look at the evidence, always, so we've got this to look at, the 70 pages, saying there's no fraud, we've got this video is a great spot to start, it looks at 15 of the main areas, rumble.com, let my people go, look at those, and if anybody can watch it, let my people go, just go to rumble.com, but I'm going to look at this, and I hope you, and there's been a couple commissioners here that say, no, I'm not going to look at that, I know it's, I know it's true, that there's no fraud, well, be willing to do that, be willing to look at this, I will look at it, everybody look at the information, we don't have an agenda here, we want to find the truth for what's good for the citizens that you represent here, and let's just be honest about it, now, here's a question, okay, so, I've got this other hand up, and I'm going to hold that, because I missed so much in this first one, so I don't know if you got it, but the pages aren't numbered on it, but we start from the front with that, you want to follow along, it's the US, you know, US country, and then Michigan, Detroit, and the second page, third page, is this one about this numbers, and each goes up to the white hat actors, well, on to the fourth page is where I've written down this added question, looking at, and I've mentioned this several times, and this would be a wonderful one that somebody could really enlighten me on, was the 2016, 2018 election, you saw those, those people, a couple times were shown here, Hillary Clinton, Kamala Harris, Vice President, there's fraud in these machines, they can be hacked, they can be flipped.
Yep.
Twenty people, more than that, there's more than that, if you look at the long version, August 2016, 2018, the question would be, where were we at, I didn't even notice it back then, to be honest, until 2020, but maybe some of you were noticing it, and had a thought on that, did you agree that there was fraud there, and what changed after 2020? The candidates changed, for one thing, but is there anything else that made you believe then, all of a sudden, the machines are all trustworthy? I'm stumped by that one, I haven't heard a peep from many of those 20 or 30 or 40 people that were complaining back then, and what's changed? Looking at the information below, voters who voted but are now inactive, how's that happen? The clerks could tell me, I don't know, how are they taken from voting to all of a sudden inactive?
The next day.
It seems like they just pull up these inactive people, have them vote, buy the machines, because they don't come in, and then just, they bring in voters, the US, and then they take them and make them inactive, that shouldn't happen, we can't trust that. Going on to the next page, again, these systems, there's three different, they're so complex, how everything interacts, and goes over to Spain and comes back, and it's using Chinese equipment, Chinese computers, if not the computers themselves, the parts, the chips within them, how do we trust them, when these guys before me mentioned, you know, TCATS was down for so long? The next page shows the actual modem, they've got the data, the emails, saying this guy from somewhere, Solinkia or someplace over there by Russia, they worked, they worked for Dominion, they said, since 2018, there had been modems in the machine, John Paul said, no, no modems, but they found them in Denver, they found 34 of them in the system, and spikes in the middle diagram, they're the machine, or the car coming into Detroit, and it's just, just consider all this, look at it honestly, that's how we can agree, we look at the data, we don't just say this is true or that is true, we look at the data openly, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other public comment? Any commissioner comment?
Bye, y'all.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.